Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of March 12, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local access programming. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that's recording tonight's meeting? Hearing none, please rise and join us in a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time I like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and the planning board members to refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. So, the first item on the agenda tonight is the 7:05, so we've got two, couple minutes to that.
Got to open the hearing.
7:05.
Right, so let's get that.
Okay. You want to do the minutes?
Yeah.
Everybody had the opportunity to read the minutes?
Yeah.
I gave her some corrections.
Pardon? You gave her some corrections, okay. I'll adjutate a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
I need discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna not vote on that, because I wasn't able to hear that.
Why don't we talk about 476 Lester Street?
Okay.
Okay with you?
Sure.
I believe this board gave them the number for their decommissioning bond about a month ago, $200,000. Don't recall if we sent that LT, we've been a draft of their decommissioning bond, I have copies. For you, somewhere, if you'd like to look at what. It's just over $200,000, so, this is just a draft, this is the final thing we've voted on, but we want to give them permission to go forward with this number. Yeah, I saw that. You can do that.
Where did these numbers come from? Who came up with they?
They came up with that number, they initially came before this board, oh, two months ago, and we thought that-
Was that the one where John gave them plenty of feedback?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and asked me to kick up the price of Paramount, which they did, kicking up the $200,000. Was it 50 before?
It was 50 before.
$50,000 was the initial?
Right, there's no way they could accomplish that work that kind of way.
Even this, I mean, this is 20 years away.
So, yeah, this is just a draft, they're looking to go and get the bond so they can get work. I believe, I'm just thinking that bond will have to come back and actually be approved once they have, have it in hand. They'll probably send it off to the insurance guy to double check to make sure that it's what matched right like we did with the charity bond that Bill was, two months ago.
And a 2% inflation adjustment in a 20-year time span, is that 2% per year? Or 2%?
I think it's 2% a year.
2% per year?
2% a year, that's right.
Okay.
Per year, that's decent.
All right.
Should put in there, per year, be specific, so there's no question, so that later, they don't say, "Oh, that was on the whole amount." One year.
Yeah, I did talk to an insurance agent for the town, they did request performance file when they do go through the bond, so that's the type they're gonna be going for.
We're gonna have some time to, for this, we're not gonna-
It's up to, if you want, we'll wait till the 26th, we can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Is that how you guys feel about that, giving opportunity to really take a look at it?
They, they asked, or they were looking at doing some changes before, did they come back?
Yes, they, I just received plans this afternoon with the changes, the, mainly the strainage changes, lot 1, lot 2 through 5 will be, have the same panels, they're just gonna be against more powerful panels, I can collect the same amount of energy without lot 1. They asked me to draft a memo saying that this board is amenable to the changes, but haven't approved any changes. You can draft a memo if you'd like to look at it now, or take it with you and look at it later. Just so the project can move along on their end. So, we received all requests modifications for 2 through 5, it's just lot 1 that is being amended. And I copied and pasted minutes at the bottom there from the meeting that we had a couple months ago. So, we're not given permission with this memo, I was just saying that, assuming everything is up, and up with the changes, that we'll consider the changes.
Mm-hmm.
So, if that's okay with you, I can send that out so they can proceed on their end, but if not, again, it's up to you, we can wait.
Yeah, that's what I remember. Yeah, okay, was there any, anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I'm fine with it. That's good.
Steve?
Aye.
Nick?
Yep.
Okay, John? Okay. Right here?
Yes.
27. Okay, so, the 7:05, new applicant ATS equipment, request for site plan approval under sections 8.2.3 and 3.2.7.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws, to allow heavy vehicular sales in a repair garage on property located at 487 Washington Street, Auburn map 57, parcel 21. Can I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, this meeting, this hearing has been continued?
Yeah, we asked, continued, they got, they, they met with ZBA last week, and that ZBA hearing was continued, so they asked for this meeting to be continued, ZBA's meeting next week, I believe, so-
To March 26th, we work then?
Right, 26th, yeah, so March 26th.
So, can I have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue to March 26th.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the 710 applicant, EPT Energy Solutions, a request for site plan approval of a special permit under section 3.10.2.3, the zoning bylaws for the use of a large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems on property located at 347 Rochdale Street, map 29 parcel 7. They've also asked for continuance to March 26th.
Yes.
Motion to continue to March 26th.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so, we're gonna discuss the-
Rachel, just put me in that abstained.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Sorry about that, Rachel, I didn't hear. The tiny house zoning bylaw?
Yes, I believe I sent, what I drafted, what I've come up with so far, what Inspector Services have come up with so far, this did go to, what I was looking for last-
Did you want to come up and join us?
Yeah. And, that was what I've been, reported to send all the zoning changes back to this board, for our view of the public hearing to be scheduled now and until March.
So, did you want to talk a little bit about this first, or?
I have a few questions and comments, but I didn't know if there was planned discussion before then. No? Okay, so, thank you for allowing me to participate. First question, considering what we had covered last time we met, on the definition for a tiny house, which is on the second page, item E, I was unsure whether or not there was planned language specifying that the tiny home is to be on a chassis or a trailer, because it was my understanding that we wanted it to be mobile, so that would be removed after it was no longer in use. And because there is already language about skirting, I thought it would just be consistent to make note of chassis or a trailer in that definition, because otherwise the language of a skirt might be a little bit out of place later on, so I didn't know if that would be something worthwhile to insert in the definition, and to have discussion about the necessity of having it mobile or removable without having to demolish the entire structure.
Right. I believe, I have to find, I did put something in there about being on a trailer.
So, section E, number 1, secure to the trailer?
Yeah.
So, should it be in the primary definition somewhere, that it, it's a mobile-
How the structure is secured to the trailer?
No.
Yeah, you know, I agree with that, that it would make sense to have that in the definition as well. Anyone else have your feeling about that?
I think something of non-permanent, because as things evolve, I don't know if they all need to be on a trailer, or what other building mechanisms they have.
That's a good point, Steve.
It's good, so.
I thought, did you talk about that some would be just on a pad, are built and brought in and put on a pad, or are they all gonna be on trailers and movable?
Our vision was trailers and movable, just because that's the easiest to get in and out.
And on a pad.
And on a pad. To level it.
Secured to the pad.
With hurricane ties.
But the, but the trailer part would be covered up, so that it didn't look like a mobile, you know, something on wheels and it was-
Secured all around.
You know.
So, that was one, one note that I had prepared. And then, items 6, 7, and 8, specifically my husband and I had issue with, mainly because our home would no longer qualify to host a tiny house dwelling.
Because of the setbacks?
Because of the setbacks. So, I do have a visual of our, of our property, I don't know if it's of interest to pass these out, I do have copies for everyone if you want to take a feed. Okay, thank you. So, our prop, our lot is actually already out of compliance with the zoning bylaws, given that our minimum, or our lot size is under the minimum of 10,000 square feet, and I don't know what happens if our lot is already out of compliance, if then there's a little bit more flexibility with-
Then it would maybe become just an existing non-conforming use-
Non-conforming.
For the small home.
You should be required to get a variance.
Right. Probably get a variance.
Existing non-conforming?
Existing non-conforming.
Use, so we'd have to apply for a variance?
Correct.
Okay. But beyond our interest, we were also discussing, and I'm sorry, my husband wasn't able to make it tonight, we couldn't find a sitter for our kids, so he's back at home. We were thinking that practically speaking, it could create bigger problems for ease of passage, especially for seniors and visitors, and then the feasibility of reusing that space, if it's 20 feet setback from the house, and say you do have a concrete pad, which you want to function as a fire pit, or more realistically, a patio space, it'd be weird.
Random to be 20 feet back, I'd agree. And I mean, the idea is, you know, for elderly parents, right, so, I think that would pose a bigger problem.
I can tell you the 20 feet were, were determined by police, fire, building commissioner, and-
In case of a fire?
So, all four, we're on 20 feet.
Wow.
As fire.
In case of fire.
The big, the primary home catches, are either one, really.
Yeah.
So, they couldn't set the other one with it.
To the point.
But it wouldn't be considered part of that dwelling as you're connecting everything to it? Right?
No, it structurally has to be tied to the building with a breezeway or something. I mean, years ago, they used to get away with burying a couple 2x4s on the ground, but there's no water anymore.
Yeah, the utilities would be connected to it, but nothing else that's, that's substantial.
I see the point that, for 20 feet, but we're gonna create a lot of variance, just looking at the lots and a lot of the neighborhoods in town.
Not to mention just like the aesthetic aspect of it.
Yeah.
20 feet off the house. Now it just looks like you put up a shed.
Yeah.
And got somebody moving.
People going back and forth on-
Well, I mean, anything like that, I mean, I think you create kind of a-
Nice word.
I mean, I don't know, but close to that, yeah, I guess, for lack of better word, yeah.
I think that kind of ties in with number 8, you know, the rear yard, well, the rear yard isn't always the most applicable.
Side, yeah, sometimes. The driveway could even be, if somebody wants to use part of the driveway as a separate slab instead of-
Have to make a walkway.
Do some things if you're not doing this.
Right, you're gonna do this, yeah, yeah.
Is the requirement when you build a garage, it's not detached 20 feet from the house as well?
Good question.
My house is not, I don't know if it's not conforming.
Probably not conforming.
I don't know the answer to that.
We should take a look at that.
I mean, I understand the fire department's concern for sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
One way you may be able to skirt the 20 feet is you put a sprinkler system in the tiny house.
Hmm, okay. That would appease the fire department, how about the police?
Maybe.
Is there a different, is it the same concern about fire?
I think they were the similar concerns, just access to-
Yeah, or a ginormous-
Fire extinguisher.
You're talking 400 square feet, a sprinkler system?
Did you run?
Hmm.
Doesn't have to be a warm system, could be a dry system.
Yeah, could be a dry system.
Which is a large extinguisher on a 400 square foot.
Right, right.
I was just trying to think of ways that they make it-
I think this is gonna require some, you know, further discussion on that point.
I'm interested to hear the answer to your question, because, you know, if you have these huge two-story garages with, you know, in-laws above them, and they can be within 20 feet, what are we talking about?
I think the 20 feet was partly because setbacks, like a side yard of 10 feet, so each property, there'd be 10 feet, and that's 20 feet, I think that was where they were cooking up the 20 feet from.
10 for one, 10 for one.
10 and 10.
Well, a setback would be-
All you've got to do is 20.
A setback is 10 feet off the property line, so if your side yard is-
So, each house, so it'd be 20 feet, 10 and 10?
Right, but it doesn't comply, because you have to be 10 feet from the structure you're putting, putting in the yard with, but you would be, you'd be more than 20 feet from the neighbors.
Yep.
That needs to be clarified a little bit, I think, you know.
I think these are unique situations.
Absolutely.
And the main purpose is originally stated, I mean, I feel like that's kind of, makes it extremely challenging for elderly grandparents and middle-aged.
Do you have a particular number you want to tell out that I can bypass?
Oh.
10.
15?
10, 15, I think.
Yeah. And I missed the initial discussion.
And rear or side, just the rear for location?
Yeah. Rear or side. And I missed the initial discussion, but the, I'm, have feelings about the direct family member, child parent, grandparent. What about caregiver? I mean, if this, the point of, the moral point of this is-
Accommodate.
One of the points is that you're going to be there to help or-
Accommodate the elderly.
Yeah.
Would they have to reside in the tiny house?
The caretaker, is that what you're-
Because what's gonna happen when you do that is-
Yeah, I'm saying a caregiver.
The caregiver will stay in the tiny house, and the elderly will stay in the main house.
Stay in the main house.
Now you have an apartment.
I think that's a great, that's a great point.
But, you know, if it's a, if it, if the point of this is caregiving and taking care of, or, you know, being there as a support, that doesn't always mean it's a family member. So, I, I kind of struggled with that in reading, and I mean, if I'm not mistaken, Massachusetts general law, doesn't it in regard to have some language in regard to caregivers? I don't know, I, I think I want to look into that a little bit more, I just, like I said, I, you know, I don't agree that with the direct family member, and again, that's a good point, John, that, you know, then it's an apartment, but not everybody has that, you know, ability to have a family member, be the one that's gonna come and take care of them, so.
It's a fair consideration, huh?
But I think it should contain, it should allow caregivers to, but it's not-
So long as we're sure that we're not creating, because there were years that we're creating apartments when the initial intent is-
Well, when you initially, when they initially came, the, your point was, I think, that you would, it was to vacate the property soon thereafter their passing, that trailer, almost, so that it wouldn't be allowed for children or anybody else to occupy it, or rent it out to other people.
That's not what this says.
Right, so, maybe some more specificity on that.
How about just a permit?
Yeah.
Renew the permit every two years.
Right.
So, I mean, unfortunately, if somebody passes in the first year, it can only be there another year, which gives you time to market it, sell it, tow it away, buy some land, put it on there for a hunting camp or something, just to give somebody some time.
Yeah.
But I thought the intent of this, a number like number 10 says wants a direct family member, should only be for the elderly and the disabled, otherwise you're gonna have the college kid come home, the little kid of 30 years could be the lonely mommy and daddy's favorite friend.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
I completely agree with that.
Yeah, that's why I say I think maybe we need some clarification on some of these other things that all tie into it, as far as, like you say, there has to be a caregiver, maybe a permit, that's a-
Should be under B for purpose to a family member, that's for elderly, that's for the elderly.
And what date are we up against in order to have this before the town meeting?
April 9th will be the public hearing, I would like to get this better by town council sooner than later.
Okay.
I don't have a date when the warrant is published, so we're up against that, so it's a tight timeline.
If, if there were to be a renewal of a permit, say, for a person who is not elderly or disabled, I would imagine that, say, college students coming home from the same family who is housing an elderly parent, the age would kind of match up where the students who are graduating from college don't yet have jobs, that's a big problem right now, prices of housing is increasingly-
I don't think it's a problem, anybody's planning a job right now.
This is true, but the millennials have high expectations, let's say, of what kinds of jobs they'll fill.
Yeah, I agree.
There's just been a lot of literature out there about children moving back home, and I would see that as a temporary solution, as they would move back home into their, their bedrooms, it could be a temporary solution for that too, I don't see that being a bad thing if there's a permit renewal process.
Lots of there.
I don't want to stay.
Yeah.
The older person could be in the main house, the student would be in the tiny house, but what's gonna happen is, in my opinion, is when the elderly person passes away, the student's still living in the back of the house for the next 30 years.
Not if there's a renewal for, you know, you have to vacate.
Right, but, I don't know how you would prove that the elderly person died other than you have to submit a death certificate.
Yeah.
I see.
And no one's gonna want to do that if they want their kid to live there.
That's ridiculous.
That's what it's gonna turn into, is a-
I think it's, it's kind of getting a little bit away from it with-
Yeah, from what we want, right, right.
You know, for what your intent was, but your intent was good for a lot of other people too.
Sure.
But when we expand it to children or the others like that, I think it gets a little maybe out of hand, or you can't control it, and it's too, too kind of big.
So, a two-year renewable permit, let's say, let's say the elderly person, disabled person passes away in the first year, the kid can live in there for a year and that's it, he's gotta be gone.
Mm-hmm.
That would limit it.
Yeah.
I still have concerns about what a child is, or what, you know, is it blood, is it, you know, some other legal mechanism, is it just someone that you care for, so like, I get concerned whenever you expand any of that without definition.
It would have to be legal guardian, adopted, blood.
Well, and that's, that's the thing, is like, you know-
We need to put that in, so Caleb can control it or enforce it.
Yeah.
The other thing you don't want to get into, respiratory care people are considered disabled.
Yeah.
And you don't want that, because they'll be living in there forever.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
I mean, you get paid good money to do that, but, not that I want them out on the street or anything, but-
No.
They would just, you know, sometimes they move out, just bring another one in, bring another one in, bring another one in, that's not the intent here, I don't think, especially not your intent, it's for your husband's mother, correct? Yeah. I think it's a novel idea.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, like you say, with aging population and the housing and cost of housing-
The cost of long-term care.
Yeah, and long-term care, and, you know, all of those things.
You could put this up, I mean, if it's like five or six grand a month for a nursing home, for a really decent one, otherwise it's like nine or 10.
Yeah, yeah.
So, one year, you've already saved 30,000.
I think usage is 10 grand.
Yeah, nine, yeah.
So, it would be cheaper to bring in, like you said, Wendy, a caretaker, whether they live there or not, there's room for two, because it says two in here, two people can occupy the space.
Two bedroom with 120 square feet.
Right.
They'd have to be pretty close.
So, you remove the child portion of the, you know-
Well, it's just disabled, they're disabled.
Disabled, yeah, that, yeah, that really, and then, you know, do you further define that, like you said, as it's not respite?
Right.
Get into discriminatory language, you wouldn't?
Right, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's not, it's not meant to be a long-term solution.
Right.
Right.
No matter what.
It's gotta be-
Yeah, that's gotta be front and center.
Right.
And not leased, and not rented out, so that language, and I didn't see-
Never leased or rented.
Right. Was that in there? I didn't-
With the way they want to do it, they could afford to put the tiny house in, save 30 grand the first year, which would probably just about pay for somebody to come in three or four times a week to help out.
What was the estimated cost of-
Of the tiny home? We've gotten different quotes, but-
What was the lowest cost?
40.
Okay, so.
The only, it's gotta be in here, it's gotta be a wooden structure on the outside, because what's gonna happen, they're gonna bring a trailer, aluminum siding, it's gotta be wood siding, wood or vinyl siding.
Remember some language you mentioned?
What we had come across before on the Nantucket definition was that it had to be harmonious in style and function of the pre-existing homes, so it had to match actually the single-family dwelling.
I would prefer that.
So, if it was vinyl, it had to be vinyl, if it was wood, it would have to remain wood, and I, I don't know if that-
I would, I would look at my neighbors and put this back.
You can put shingles, wood shingles on a house that is there when you put up the tiny home.
Right.
Put up the vinyl shingles that look exactly the same, sure.
Right, right.
To keep the system of the neighborhood, it's the aesthetic.
Yeah, but who's gonna be the judge of all? The committee in town is-
Pathetics.
You know, isolated.
I think the homeowner would want to know.
In the draft, it specifically said it wasn't to be a recreational vehicle, it's a mobile home, so.
Maybe that covers it.
I don't, again, I don't know how many people are making steel mobile or tiny homes.
Oh.
Well, so I'm just saying, like, if you're worried about steel siding, I think it's best to say harmonious.
Someone in the office found a tiny home, made out of dumpster.
Oh, yeah, there are lots of creative tiny homes out there.
Old car Xboxes.
Well, yeah, exactly, those, yeah.
They say it all right here.
Yeah, but that wouldn't pass through HUD and state building codes, I mean, the converted systems, I don't think actually pass any codes, standards.
Depends on how you renovate the car.
May I ask a question actually about HUD, in addition to state building codes, is there, is there really a difference in standards?
Oh, yeah.
There is.
Oh, yeah, state building code, like plumbing, is mainly for institutional.
Okay.
You treat your plant or a power plant, but usually they refer you back to the local plumbing code, it's electrical code, it's building code.
HUD is more specifically for housing?
Right.
Okay.
I believe HUD speaks to the anchoring of the, of the tiny homes or the mobile homes as well.
Okay.
You have to go to permits, but if you find one already made.
If we were to subcontract out, say, to build ours, it wouldn't have to go through HUD inspection, would it?
If you're building it, you have to go through a bill.
Just the regular building, and zoning, okay.
So, if they contracted somebody to build it, I'm sure it would be built off your site, not at your home. He's going to build it in a shop where he can, you know.
Possibly, but it's a family member, so we have, we have a close family member who would be involved.
In your particular case, but if somebody was doing this for a business, which a lot of guys do now, it's going to be in a shop.
Sure.
So, would the building inspector go to the shop to inspect it before it's delivered?
I talked to Caleb, and he said as long as it's in Auburn, that would be okay, because it would be on-site in Auburn.
Yeah, because you're going to make these in Maine, he's not going to travel to Maine to do it.
Right.
So, that's when the HUD kicks in.
Okay, so that's one, okay.
So, I think that the definition of the direct family members got to be addressed. And the addition of the two-year renewable permit, but I'm.
You were actually going to have an annual permit.
That's fine, too.
Annual.
Oh, you're just throwing stuff against the wall, see what sticks.
I think it was Board of Health was going to probably be stuck with it.
That's fine.
The track.
Normal fee.
So, one-year renewable permit.
Fifty or a hundred bucks a year.
Yeah.
Only anybody would argue with that.
Are, are we looking to require a bedroom as part of this? Some tiny homes are just.
It's in here.
No, I know, again, I'm, I'm just asking if the intent is to require a bedroom or not.
Yeah.
Some of these three people, one person or one hundred and twenty. You'd think you'd want to require one, but it just becomes storage.
Well, I know sometimes they have, like, open area where the bed, you know, they just sleep in one room and live in that room. That's why.
Well, you mean a convertible.
Yeah, a convertible or something on a single level that is a dual-space type thing, so it wouldn't be considered a bedroom. So, four hundred square feet, absolutely, you can get it in, but if you were looking for something like a hundred square feet, you know, are you going to require a seventy-square-foot bedroom on a hundred square foot?
Which comes into play on a chassis or a trailer, because there are limitations for roadworthiness. You can't get that much, you can't get close to four hundred if you're planning on putting it on a trailer.
Ten by forty? Sure you can. What do you think?
But ten, ten-foot wide.
Forty-foot long? That's what a semi-trailer is, ten-foot wide by forty-foot long.
But roadworthiness, you can't get to ten feet wide without a wide load permit.
Yeah, that requires a sign on the back of the unit, says wide load. You don't need a person behind you for ten feet. You go over with that, you need the person following you.
Like forty, forty feet, you think you could?
Is a mobile home eight feet at ten feet?
A normal tractor-trailer is forty people, just a trailer.
But can you find a trailer to, so just a removable tongue trailer? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think this, your particular one has to be four hundred square feet.
Okay.
I think that's.
That's the maximum.
That's a maximum.
Sure.
So, if you put a ten-by-seven bedroom in, say, three hundred square feet, or that's ten-by-thirty, or eight by whatever.
Yeah, not more than a total of four hundred, so maximum.
On that, I brought it up because I don't know if the intent is to require seventy-square-feet to be allocated.
You start getting into eight-by-fifty, that's longer than a lot of houses.
Yeah.
You want to move in and move out into tiny houses.
You'd have to move, yeah.
The building code says for a half a bedroom, it's minimum seventy square feet for one person, or if it's a two-person, a hundred and twenty, that's just.
But it doesn't need a bedroom, is what I'm saying.
Someone's going to be sleeping there, we'd say yes, but that's a building code question, I don't have a lot of answers to that.
I don't know if it has to have closing walls. I know there were specifications for the bathroom to have the privacy, but I don't know if privacy walls are required in the bedroom.
Adam, can you ask town council about his thoughts on recording some sort of affidavit or something against the title?
Yes.
Most boards of health now, it's if you get a two-bedroom septic, you record something saying you can only have two bedrooms, you know, so. But just I worry about people selling when they have this, new buyers not knowing about permits, does it become previous, non-conforming, you know? If you clarify the title, it could help.
I had that thought, yeah.
So, would you even be able to sell without moving? It's not.
Well, at least people will know when they, when they sell, because the title will be searched.
But a younger couple might want to move in because that has a tiny home in the back of their elderly parent, and they can renew the permit every year.
Correct.
That may, that may be a selling point to some, which I don't have a problem with that, it's doing the same purpose it was for the original owner.
Correct.
You got to renew your permit every year, and if you don't meet the requirements for the permit, you're going to hold on.
So, that's unlike the ADU language. I know the accessory dwelling regulations did require changes in the title, or it would be nullified as soon as sale to different owners went underway. So, the accessory dwelling units have different language.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know if that, that's important, but it was referenced in this model that the zoning bylaws, I forget where it was, it's actually under the authority, so A, the tiny home shall require special permit from the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section nine point three, which makes reference to the accessory dwelling structures. So, I don't know if the same sort of bylaws would be upheld about.
No, no, it's referencing the, it's going to be given the special permit.
That's it, okay.
So, that special permit would be allowed to be transferred, or they'd have to submit for?
They have to. It wouldn't really transfer if it's a new person.
And then they'd have to come back in, so.
If it's somebody, yeah, I believe, so if somebody is buying the property, yeah, if you're just renewing every year, you don't have to go through the special permit process itself, you just need to.
Renew the permit. But then if you're going to transfer title, and someone thinks they can just plow up a family member in there, and they don't have the approval here, they buy the house, then they are, they're responsible to remove.
And you do get into a sticky, we're good, too, with, you know, disabled, because, you know, what is the, what definition are you using?
ADA compliant, which is a twenty-five-foot.
I know, I know.
So, what's that?
It's not a high threshold. If it needs one or more of your daily functions.
Right.
So is speaking at this point, too.
Wouldn't the timeline of the special permit kind of exclude a lot of problems without mentioning certain groups that should or should not be on the premises? If, if you have to renew the permit every year, you could sign an affidavit, not only about how many people are living there, but who is living there? Is that?
Well, and it comes in because you've put a definition of direct family member, so, again, getting back to what about a caregiver, so.
Oh, I didn't put in that language, I don't know where that language came from.
Rather than a direct family member, so, or it could be direct family member or caregiver.
It should, direct family member and caregiver.
And caregiver, and, not or.
And.
Yep.
Mrs. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you gather these from other communities that have it? How many different communities did you go to?
Well, online, I researched. Nantucket mainly is where I drew the language, because they had already gone through the process, but I know Great Barrington is creating the language mainly in Western Mass right now.
Because if we get, could just, maybe we could get some other ones and just get more of a idea to pick from to.
Sure.
Make a comprehensive one that's pretty, we don't want to make it all entangling.
It's going to be rural areas, most likely, more or less. It's going to be areas that have fewer and fewer long-term care and facilities. You're not going to find one in some county.
There's not incentives.
Right.
Want to make it cover everything, allow it, but not make it.
Definitely more rural areas.
So hard to do that it's nobody's doing it.
Rural is.
So is Nantucket.
Florida, Mass.
But the Nantucket's pretty strict, I mean, you only pay your house somebody going.
We pulled a lot of this wording from Florida.
Yeah, from Florida.
From where?
Florida.
They allow it.
We pulled some of this from there, as well as Nantucket, Great Barrington, and just internal discussions.
Well, the western part of the state, unless you're in the, like, Pittsfield, North Adams, Adams, Lee, Heart of Lennox, you got, like, Hancock, Great Barrington, not having eight thousand square foot lots.
No. No. But this wording is much more stricter than the Nantucket's or Great Barrington's. Nantucket's is just the paragraph, Great Barrington's, if it's approved, it's just the paragraph, it's a bit more limited. The intent is just to have generally elderly people that, you know, need the help to live or, that's the intent, you can't really quite, I don't think it might limit it solely to that, but.
Did it mention ADA compliant in here?
By what?
Mentioned ADA compliant. So, if you don't mention ADA compliant, couldn't you limit it to the elderly and the disabled, physically disabled?
Elderly and disabled family members.
Is that it?
Elderly and disabled family members and their caregivers. I think that's what we're looking to go with it.
Just out of curiosity, did you have a size in mind?
Yeah, we had, well, I had submitted plans, so we were thinking eight and a half by twenty-two, so that would be, I think, a hundred and seventy square feet, something like that.
Times twenty is a hundred and sixty, eight times two is sixteen, a hundred and seventy-six.
Okay, all right, so roughly, thank you. I got close.
Yeah.
Those are the trailer sizes that we've come across that are more standard, and we were advised that to have ease of way with a house on it. If you go bigger than twenty-two, it's, it's really tricky. Things start falling apart in the house, and it loses its structural integrity. If you're going with a longer structure on a trailer, and you take it on the highway, even if it's fastened and it's secure, the actual vibrations of that size in motion, it.
Just the trans, what are you talking about?
For transport. Yeah.
But if they mount things like they do on a mobile home, it's not going to happen. Because mobile home trails get on the road all the time, they move them site to site. You order one, they show up to your site, it comes, you know, two hundred miles.
I'm sure if they're going to be manufacturing them on a regular basis, they can figure a way to anchor them to the trailer.
People don't touch manufactured homes, so.
The difference is that that's, you know, in a controlled environment, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of, I don't know. All right.
That was just our thought, because we're planning on going with subcontractors that goes through, so.
Plus, with your eight thousand square foot lot, you need something smaller that you can bring around the back of that truck.
Exactly.
And get the truck back out.
Yeah.
Anybody, any other thoughts?
So, where do we go from here?
I will incorporate your thoughts and suggested changes, get some more feedback, and my goal is to at least get some feedback from council into this week. I can put on the agenda for next time for more discussion, if you like, and then public hearing, we'll have to have on the ninth. Time wise, we're, we're going to be tight, so I'll be advertising for that soon.
So, if you can get us something prior to, after you've spoken to town council.
In your edits, that way we can, maybe if we have any more questions.
Have you sent this in a Word document? Then we can actually make edits ourselves in Red, and then we can just send it back to you. Save a lot of time. PDF, you really can't change a PDF.
Or at least, you know, add comments and, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll have them on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, quick question, Adam, about the petition, it's going through the planning board, but advertising, public hearing.
I think we're in to care about advertising.
Okay.
So, after all, and one, we have three zoning changes, three.
Okay.
Close amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But if you had your own bedroom in the backyard.
It didn't matter what I had, that's true. How'd you off the property? I wouldn't have gone to law school.
This must be the door that. Well, I'm concerned, I'm just finishing.
This is Reliant Medical, the new one that they are.
Steven, kids are now being diagnosed with defiance disorder, so I wonder if that will be.
Well, and that's where I was going, it's like the affluenza, you know, and all that, I have to live here.
I was going to say, I thought they were multiply disability, maybe spots, but they're just trying to move them up. Add three more, add three.
Thank you.
Signage three more. Oh, hi.
Hi.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Jason Miller from Buller Engineering. I'm representing Reliant Medical.
Okay.
And I don't know if you have the handouts, I brought some copies as well.
Yes.
Yep, that's the one. So, what we're looking to do is Reliant opened the doors, they, they have a higher interest for more ADA spaces. So, we're looking, there's, the parking space count will stay the same at the mall, there's no change, it's just restriping three new ADA spaces out front of the main entrance with signage, just to match what's there right now, and one space would be relocated to the rear of the lot, and just be restripped in that area. And so, I just wanted to bring it up front and see what the board thinks about this, and if you're all comfortable with it, what's the process with the approval and?
So, we don't lose any spaces, and you're adding more ADA spaces over and above the required amount.
Right, and before you did this, it meets all ADA requirements through the whole site, but actually have more than you actually need at the Reliant, at the mall site.
Ron, did you have a question?
So, you had four.
Mm-hmm.
You added three.
Correct.
That's seven, and is plus an additional one around the back?
Duh. That'll be just a regular space, that won't be an ADA space. So, we're adding three extras.
Just on this plan, in front of the building, you added three, you wind up with, it's a total of fifty-two spaces right in front of the building, you wind up with forty-five lots right in front of the building. I don't think they're going to need any more than that.
I was going to say, is that going to be enough?
If it's reserved for patients only.
Go ahead.
I spoke to the building inspector, and I got a copy of the building code, hospital outpatient facilities need at least ten percent of care, residential parking spaces, and rehab facilities, and outpatient physical therapy need at least twenty percent of spaces to be handicap, ADA accessible. So, that's, the building inspector, he just put something to the system this evening, so I assume he'll be getting.
That's why I wondered, is this going to be enough? Are you going to be coming back for this again?
This is what Reliant told us is what they need.
Well, this doesn't mean the ten percent requirement.
How many spaces do you have? Do we have out here, total?
Don't have them for the total.
Is that what we're looking at, ten percent of all the existing spaces are?
When include employees parking.
You have, minus employees, but there would be patient parking, if there's seventy, and we needed ten percent, we'd need seven, so. How many do we have for patient parking over, for the whole facility, I would say?
Oh, here, you got fifty-two.
So, that's just a lot.
Okay, so it's just those three spaces.
So. Just Reliant. Medical kit, all the way from left to right.
Yeah, that whole, I'm tired.
It's 52, 52 is 100, 52 is 36.
Because I've been in the facility and it's.
Total, 15 and 16.
You know, people coming and going and pretty active.
Spaces, if that's considered a separate lot, so those would have to be 10% here as well.
So all ones from the building, like where your cursor is at, and from there out to the bushes.
Yep.
That's all considered the line of parking.
Yep, yes.
Around the corner.
Yep.
Coming up the other side.
Scroll picture up.
Over here.
Right in there.
I'm not sure if they're using that or not.
There may be some employees.
Yeah, but showing, but showing.
Patient parking spaces, can you tell us how many we got?
I don't know the exact number, how many patient spaces that we have, I'd have to.
Okay, because as I said, we need 10% of that to be handicapped.
Unless the rehab facilities are included, outpatient physical therapy, that needs to be even higher.
20%.
20%.
So there's no rehab there, right, at that location?
They need 15 to 20.
I don't believe there is. Stocked, stocked as offices.
Plus one to the right.
And there's an eye clinic and.
They give you a sign about those.
I told you.
Did what?
I told you.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to know.
The total spaces.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's just from the building out to the bushes, left to right, and you need, say, 20%, it's 30 whatever spaces. My question is, how do you keep people out of there for parking there during the Christmas shopping season?
Well, if you go beyond, you're going to put a restaurant in there?
Yeah.
There was going to be a probable restaurant there. Those spaces that we see beyond where the building ends in the dark color may be what they were going to apply towards the restaurant or something else, if they're still going to do that, and I'm not sure.
Are you talking about the north parking lot?
One of them, Tesla charging stations.
Tesla charging stations, correct.
At one point they proposed putting a pad over the restaurant.
Those that turn direction where they're perpendicular to the others.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, the rest of them's going to go down about a right-hand corner.
So if that happened, those other ones would be far if they don't.
Right.
Or else that's just fall off parking for Christmas.
How do you keep people out of there for parking there at Reliant Medical here during the Christmas season? They park anywhere.
Yeah.
All the hell.
Was there a variance granted when Reliant was being built, parking?
I have to research.
I don't remember. I don't recall there was a variance for the parking, because I think there was ample parking.
There was, and we met all the ADA requirements for spaces there and we had, we were using, it's all still the same number of parking spaces that you need, actually extra for the uses of the mall area per zoning.
All right. So do you think you could come back to the March 26 meeting and be prepared with those numbers and then we can figure that out and go from there? We want to make sure, because having visited the facility, I'm thinking that these three additional spaces really aren't going to be enough.
Okay.
And you don't want to have to come back.
Yeah.
And if we can just.
Yeah, my concern is if we have to do the 10% of the parking spaces.
Well, you lose some in between because of the crosshatch on each side.
Right, so the concern is that if we add that many more spaces to it, then that's going to be more ADA spaces than Reliant actually needs to use.
That's what our requirement would be. I think you'd have to meet that and then you'd have, you'd have more than enough for the facility with the, if you had 150, even if you lose 20 more off of that, or 25, because you already got some as ADA, you'd still have more than enough.
Right, and so the parking count would come down across the board of the site itself.
Right, but if that's all you're parking from the building toward Auburn Street, right, that's, it's 52 spaces according to the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Each overall is 52 spaces. So that was 150 some odd, so we took out 16.
Yep.
And another 16 for the hash mark, it still leaves for 124. That should be more than enough.
More than enough.
Yeah, I think so. Because that way you can make all those spaces up front.
Yeah, the whole front of the building.
Adam said patient, right, for that parking? Like what's determined patient and what's determined employee parking in there?
I believe the mother works there, so I believe they have to park back towards where the book is.
Yeah, close to where the pipe goes by on that side?
Well, and that's, I'm just saying, so like you couldn't include that in the council. They currently would have fewer spaces than what we're seeing allocated for patient, so then their number wouldn't need to be.
Well, that's why I say, rather than try to figure out what the number is and, you know, let's have you come back with the information at the March 26 meeting and we'll, you know, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Show employee parking, I think, have them show employee parking.
Yeah, employee parking, patient parking.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Patient parking and suggested ADA and then we'll say what you need.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
180 access street note? Okay. So there's been a little bit of back and forth between St. Joseph's Church and.
A little bit what?
St. Joseph's Church.
Park and porch.
Father Bamber and Pastor Gonzalez, United Church.
Pentecostal church.
Pentecostal, thank you. Where we asked them to block off the entryway with plantings. They've got some pushback. Pastor Gonzalez got some pushback from Father Bamber about plantings and said he asked for a fence with a gate, a gate that can open for snow plowing. I spoke to the town engineer, he kind of mixed that idea and now they just want a gate, a fence all the way across with no plantings.
Across where? From the youth center to the like?
Yeah.
The left-hand grass boundary as you would be in the back of the rectory?
Right. Instead of planting.
So it's like a 30 feet, 35, 40 feet maybe?
More than that. Could you bring up the site on the?
Show where you, where you're talking about, Adam.
30 feet. To block off any access coming out to Oxford Street.
Correct.
So you want to go from the right-hand side there, run just to the left of the bucket truck, all the way across to the grass strip from St. Joseph's.
With the signs at?
With a fence.
With a fence.
How far in on the property?
I'm sorry?
How far in?
You can put a foot off the sidewalk if they want.
And they get more space on the front for whatever they might want, but.
Yeah, they're going to have to leave the sidewalk and then put the fence.
35 feet.
And no plantings. And no gate?
And no gate.
And no gate.
Because the gate, what I thought was the gate could be left open, anybody could be just going in there anytime.
I mean, if it got left open?
Yeah.
So what's Father Pastor Gonzalez's opinion about that?
I told him I'd get back to what the, what you guys thought was.
Because they haven't done anything up there yet, nothing.
No. They also want, if your, the gate was, the fence was okay, what kind of fence?
What about the snow plowing? What goes, what would go on there then?
I mean.
You have to push.
Nightmare.
Because where that bucket truck is parked, that belongs to that house, correct?
Correct.
So really, the fence would really start about here.
Right, yep.
So come up and over that way.
Yep.
Claws would have to, well, if they're not using it for anything, they could start anywhere they have, it just leaves snow there.
Didn't Father?
Something we're going to do the entrance, those steps.
Yeah, Father Gonzalez said those were coming off, right?
Right, because the entrance is going to be on the side.
Right.
The fence would have to be at least, I would think, five feet in, so they're all plowing and, you know, walking access.
It complicates the plowing.
It definitely does.
Well, if they, if you put a fence actually up along the right-hand side of that driveway towards the church and across the front, they could come around the back and push it all up against that fence because there's no vehicle access there anyway, so you'd have that whole area in the front for snow storage. It wouldn't look very good.
What type of fence would you put then?
I'd put a wrought iron.
Well, John, he can, they can use snow storage in back of the facility because they own that piece of land in the back.
Right, but getting it from the front.
They should clear it and use that.
But how do you get it from here?
You'd have to back.
You'd have to carry, you know, with those.
Well, that's up to them.
With the loader, with the big oak.
That's an easement area for parking.
What is, in back, it was back two rows, so you're not.
No, I don't mean the rows, Scott, I mean right directly in back of the church, the old church, there's that piece of land like woods.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They could clear that and I believe they own that for a cer, almost at least back to the end of the parking lot, like the church does. And they could, there's a lot of snow storage there.
So Father Bamber would like Father Gonzalez and the Pentecostal Church to put the fence there?
Oh, hi.
Four foot.
Four foot, yeah.
Maybe black vinyl.
Black wrought iron or vinyl, black wrought iron.
No, you don't want black vinyl. I mean, the black vinyl disappears, but it's a chain link fence.
Yeah, right.
So I think the wrought iron, shouldn't that be wrought iron, it should be a metal fence.
Yeah, black metal fence.
To at least simulate a wrought iron fence.
They could get near that with a plow, so.
If it were wrought iron, it'd be all right.
And that gives them opportunity to rebuild that.
Well, that simulated wrought iron is too.
Sidewalk too.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said that gives them, you know, then they can rebuild that sidewalk and make that a continuous without danger of being run over.
If they ask me, I expect to ask.
That's like curving across.
Would a, the three-foot gate be okay for a person getting in and out of that?
I would think yes.
It's so long.
How close is it to the crosswalk at that point?
Yeah, because how's a mailman get in?
Yeah.
Right?
Crosswalk, I think it just.
Should be two man gates.
And you kind of scoot over, oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, there should be two man gates. One near the sidewalk and one maybe midway down the, down the way. But, but the church has to realize that now that it's put a fence across, I don't be, I don't think you'll ever get the curb opening back. There's no way the town would allow that down the road 10 years from now, that curb opening would be reestablished.
Was it the town or Mass Highway?
Town. Mass Highway is Mass Highway, but where that opening is right now is not in a great place as we all mentioned.
Yeah, no, it's terrible right there at that intersection.
Yep.
I think this is going to help a lot at that intersection. Well, any, any further thoughts, Steve? Nick? John? Ronnie? No, I think.
I'll get, I'll get to them and ask them this minute about that plan.
Yep. He said two man gates.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Do you know if there was a reason why Father Bamber wanted a fence?
I don't.
Instead of plantings?
No, yeah. They had to do a snow, do a lawn, I don't know why.
It's additional maintenance too. I mean, if it's, if you've got plantings there, then you've got to keep the landscaping up.
Yeah, but you could put the big concrete things out there for plantings, make it look nice and they could be removed, you don't lose the curb opening. Nobody's not thinking of that.
You might suggest that might not be the best idea.
Yeah, you could maybe have a proposition. All right, let me discuss the 076 Leicester Street. Is there anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. So Signature Henshaw Street. I can't.
So.
Yep.
Is the 12?
12.
Yep.
Yes.
Take these with me.
Yep. It's blue. I was going to.
There's another one coming.
Let's do that. That's what it is.
Thank you. All right. Any updates, planner updates? Anyone? No?
I don't think so.
Okay. Detained a motion for a judge.
Everyone got those solar bylaws, right?
Yeah. Sure it's not all. You didn't get it, we don't all send them out yet.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.